Counsel Baker. Counsel Wheeler. Counsel Thomas. Remarks on public agenda.
I would, I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and amend the agenda.
To reflect.
To skip over a lot of this stuff unless you got a committee report.
Specifically state what you're trying to amend the agenda to do.
Uh, I am trying to. Get out of here very early. We could go to remarks of the mayor if the mayor has remarks. And then we could go, there's, there's nothing on here.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't have a committee report unless I have a committee report, the mayor has a report.
Okay, so we will.
I'm here.
The motions?
Yes.
If you move in second, any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Counselor King.
Yay.
Counsel Martin.
Present.
Counsel Baker. Counsel Wheeler.
Yeah.
Counsel Thomas.
I don't know what I'm voting on, but I'm voting on something.
Okay, so it'll reflect the, the agenda and we're going to be, uh. We'll skip over Counsel. Where's the mayor? Going down to remarks of the, and council reports, committee reports, none, right?
Yeah, it is one. I have one.
Skipping through a little quick.
Okay.
Okay. This is a personal appointment committee report. Good evening, everyone. A month ago, I asked, and I had our clerk, Tracy, to send a response for all the hires. And I haven't gotten an answer or a response to that yet. It's been over a month. I want that stated for the record. We wanted to look at what people are making, and we need to, uh, make some adjustments. We wouldn't do that. But as I speak to you right now, I have not received a response to that, and it's been at least a month now. That concludes report of personal appointment committee.
Thank you, Counsel.
Yes.
On the agenda, we were going to discuss some of the mayor committee reports and announcements from the mayor.
Thank you, but I want to interrupt the flow of the council reports, so, and then we'll be brief. There's the financial recovery plan, the latest version that we're working on, as we all know, there was an amendment required to that. Uh, we've spoken with a couple of members of the council, we'll have some before you soon. Uh, we certainly are facing some tough times, so it'll be very, very steep cuts in lots of areas. And, uh, we do consider all the options, and, uh, there's certainly one big option out there that, you know, it's time, uh, that we consider now. And that's it.
This is, this is a great council meeting tonight, folks. We have no legislation tonight, uh, on the agenda, so we're going to remarks in the public. Everybody has, uh, two minutes, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Good evening, Counsel. Kelvin, 14802 Allen Avenue. I'm going to pass you guys, well, I'm not going to pass you, all you guys, then you guys can look over. These are. Holes where our buses are passing, our vehicles are striking. These are called concrete slabs. RTA put those in place. Either RTA should fix them, or we should fix them. This hole here is Euclid Avenue. Okay, that's right by Eddie Road. It's also marked here, you guys can see the distance of the holes that we have here. Also, where here in Road Hospital used to be, that street is completely damaged. It makes no sense for it to look like this. And if you look in the background, you'll see the apartment building that's been demolished. Those are not porches. Those are windows removed, elevator shafts, and you can still hear the fire alarms inside those buildings, inside the buildings. It makes no sense. I leave a deck for y'all to look at. Also, I want to know, where's the HUD money? We need our homes repaired. Why is there no HUD money? What do we use this money for? Uh, Finance Director. I do believe the Finance Director needs to come forth on some kind of charges for mismanaging the city's money. We've had Law, Law Director, we've had different Finance Directors, and somebody should be accountable for where this money is. There should be no way East Cleveland should be in a hole with educated Finance Directors. Somebody should be accountable for that money, not somebody signing paperwork saying it's spent, it's spent, it's spent. We all have a line item, we need to know where it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Patricia Bollabia, 1894 Farmington. Two things I'd like to say about this schools. One is that we are very happy about the, uh, repair of Garfield in front of Superior Elementary. And we'd love to hear when that, when we expect that that will be completed. It's, it's terrific that it's in process. The other thing is that the Prime Involvement Committee meeting is this Thursday at 6:30 at Shaw High School. And, uh, it would be great to have a terrific turnout.
What time is it?
6:30 on Thursday. Love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, Mr. Wheeler, I have a question for you. Uh, the last time I was here, I had asked about demolition on Northfield. Are they doing any demolitions on Northfield?
I'll see your address around, check before I leave.
Pardon me?
I'll check before I leave tonight and give you the address.
Uh, 1-4. What, what you mean?
I'm gonna check the list, and then I'll see tonight and tell you what house on Northfield.
Okay, well, I don't know the addresses to them, but.
No, I got the list.
Okay.
I'll go down the list.
Okay, and, um, there's something I wanted to ask, um. I don't know if they're gonna clean this catch basins out, because we're still having that little flooding issue there with the catch basins. I don't know about the other end of Allegheny, but I know the ones that are facing Hayden are still having issues with flooding a little bit. Okay, and actually, I think that was it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Tiffany Fisher, 1307 East 143rd. Just one, last time I came here at the last council meeting, I mentioned that we have several groups going to Columbus for their state conference. I did not give you the information to get you a ticket if you would like to attend. Once again, November 8th, Sunday, November 8th. Our Shaw Jazz Band Progeny, um, has been chosen to be the only band playing for the annual Black Caucus OSBA, Ohio School Board Association Dinner. That dinner starts at six o'clock at the Convention Center downtown Columbus. The tickets for that event is seventy dollars if you pay for it before October 30th. Yeah.
I'll get five.
If you want to pay at the door, it's seventy-five dollars. You can go on the Ohio School Board Association webpage if you want to pay ahead of time. The guest speaker again for that event, that dinner, will be Nina Turner, Senator Nina Turner. Also, that Tuesday, November 10th, the Student Achievement Fair for the conference, um, is huge. It's over ten thousand people there. It's all the school board members of Ohio. Our Jazz Band, once again, Progeny, has been invited to that. They will perform. They are the only band in northeast Ohio that will perform. There's five regions. They're the one from the northeast region, region. That event is totally free. The whole four days from Sunday to Wednesday at the Convention Center is totally free. I want to encourage everyone, because everyone here has spoke well about the children of East Cleveland. It's very important to, if you can't go, or you know someone to go that supports the children of all over Ohio, please, um, reach out and send that, send them the information. Also, I chair Building and Grounds and, uh, for the school board. And there was a long wait on the windows at Heritage to be fixed in front of the school. They have been fixed. They were on back order for a while, from what I understand. They are up and they're doing well. The windows look really nice. There's only one small thing, if, I don't know, because I came in late today, the lights are out on Northfield and Hayden. There's two sets of lights. Thank you so much. That's all I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you.
My name is 1860 Rock. Good, um, I. Somewhat echo, not somewhat, I do echo the sentiments of, uh, Mr. Erby in reference to the, our city and its, and the appearance of our city. As well as City Hall itself, where everything should be innovated from here. Secondly, um, I too question as to why aren't there houses and things being rehabbed in the city? There's money that we get from HUD every year, or rehabbing and development, and it's not taking place here. And I don't know whether it's designed or that, that you're trying to set a pattern, whereas the people could become so disenchanted with the city and then say, what the use? Let's just go on to, people couldn't do any worse. But I don't, I don't think people are going to be that easy persuaded by not taking care of things here. And it doesn't only reflect administration, it reflects the council as well. And secondly, I know it was on the agenda, but it's off now. There was a piece of land that you had on there, on the agenda. And I understand it has been removed from the agenda. That was being sold for a hundred dollars. That's what they was recommending. You can't even buy a grave site for a hundred dollars. I could see it if the person was purchasing the property that was going to develop it, or whatever, to, for that amount. But if they just getting it, holding it in, I'm, I'm almost certain it's in this area here, the west end of our city. Whereas, uh, University Inc. wants to move in, and we, uh, are tearing down everything. It doesn't take no brains to tear it out. It takes brains to build. And seemingly, it's, that is lacking in the city. There's absolutely nothing going on, and, and no one want to come to this city when they see that we're not doing anything in our city to attract people who want to come here. And so, I just hope that in this plan, besides just, uh, keep penalizing the citizens that's left here. You find other means of revenue and try to attract revenue into the city. And I hope that be in the plan, that whatever you present. And then we, we go along with the fact that, uh, no plan is being presented, and I, I, I did speak with, uh, uh. Councilman Wheeler, he and I had some dialogues, and he was saying that he, he have asked that the three branches of government sit down and come up with the plan. And I hope that plan is not just penalizing the city, that you will come up with a plan that, that will move us under the auspices of the, of the state. And so, we say we love this city, then show your love and come up with a plan.
Thank you.
And, so, I just hope we do something about these potholes and things we have issues with.
Counselor mine, uh, especially wanting to come back.
Thank you, Vice President, Councilman, um, Wheeler. Um, I know it's not, uh, usually allowed to come back to parent and speak at the mic twice. I just forgot, I said there were several groups at the Student Achievement Fair, which is on Tuesday, November 10th. I, I did not mention, the Provost Scholars will be there as well from the school district. They are, they work in conjunction with Case Western Reserve with our students. They will be there as well. And also, there's a group that comes in and helps with our music teaching at the elementary schools. They will also be, it's called Learning Through Music. They will also be present. Also, let me real quickly say, at this conference, it has so many people there, I believe, and I'm almost certain, because I looked through the program. We have the most amount of programs and students coming to this conference. There's three different groups and everything, so it's a big thing.
Oh, you mean, you talking about the Columbus thing?
Yes, at Columbus, on the, um, Tuesday, the 10th, and that's pretty much an all-day thing. Thank you very much, Councilman Wheeler. Have a good one.
Journal Struthers, 44112news.com. I'm, uh, addressing the situation with council. Felony charges against clerk, really? Really? Felony charges against the clerk for, for assault? I've never seen, I mean, I've never seen anything this bad before in my life. And I always say this when it gets to this point, I'm gonna unleash the cracking on you. I'm gonna unleash the cracking on you for, for, for doing this whole thing. No insurance on people, no insurance on, on drivers because we didn't file a paper. In, in Columbus, it's a funny thing, but we had a gentleman get killed. Christopher Campbell Jr. got killed. Nobody from the city has even said sorry. I really, I really, really hope that you guys get the point. Oh, cracking, you can see that in commercials. There's a golf, a commercial where the cracking comes out, grabs the people, and they're playing golf. I think they're hitting it with a golf, golf club. It's real easy to tell. So I really wish you'd file charges against me. I really do. Just the bed bug thing. I hope, I hope, I hope we still, I hope we've done something about the bed bug situation that's got all, that's got downstairs all infested and up here, still infested.
Is it, it's still here?
It's sprayed.
Did it, twice? Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Mayor, Counsel. My name is Paul Clinton Davis Jr., 1367 Shelby. I, um, I know everybody here, and the mayor got his ideas, y'all have your ideas. The people out here, all these people in East Cleveland, they're not concerned. You see that. Every time I come here, it's like this, you know? And it's a shame. The. Y'all are here because there's something over here that need to be fixed, and y'all supposed to fix it. But. So busy cutting each other's throats and stabbing each other in the back, just sitting over there, it ain't fixed. My point is, I can't say, y'all just have to work a little better. Just like people saying suing the clerk, stupid. Come on. That's, that's stupid. You know, y'all have your difference. There's nothing wrong with that. You, you, you can fall out, argue. You shouldn't hate each other or dislike each other. We're on the same team. You know, I'm with y'all. Come on. You don't like this council, I don't like this council, that council I don't like, and I can't give nothing time. You probably be fixing that over there. You can't get it fixed, y'all keep bumping our heads. The other problem is, all the motherfuckers out there in East Cleveland, they don't care. They listening to the monkey. They listen to the wrong people coming up here, to somebody who told them some dumb stuff, and it ain't true. So when you put it all together, you ain't getting nowhere. I know this man is trying his best, and I hoping y'all is. But I hope you get my point when I'm trying to say. Regardless of whatever happened, we all going down the same hole together, one way or the other. But, but, but these people coming up here, bitching and crying, there is no money. I've been here fifty-some years. Ain't, the only thing that's happened, and ain't y'all's fault, it was messed up before y'all got here. I ain't blind, I've been walking up, down, looking at what happened. Ain't nothing been built. All them, you got all them other councils and, and mayors, ain't nothing been built. It ain't just y'all's fault. I don't even know why y'all want to be council. You know? So, now I ain't got nothing twisted. Been here too long.
I'm, I'm, I'm fast speaking.
You know, uh, see, that's what I'm talking about. What I'm talking, I ain't up here to hurt nobody or accuse nobody. It is what it is. And you people ain't blind. The people out here ain't blind. Come on, we just gotta work together. That's all.
Thank you, I thank you.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Jevani Garrison. I actually reside in Cleveland, but I'm currently raising fifteen hundred dollars to do skateboard lessons over at MLK Civic Center.
Do what, sir?
Uh, skateboard lessons. Um, so I just wanted to let you know, and then if you want to connect, I have a card to give you. That way you can keep posted on the updates. Thank you.
All right. You want to respond? Oh, I'm sorry.
Counsel, Mayor, my name is Devin Branch. I'm a member of the Board of Trustees of the East Cleveland Public Library. I do want to correct a misstatement. There has been development and construction in East Cleveland. There has been the Circle East Development, as well as a house construction, a new house construction, and that Circle East Development, which is on Lakeview, which is one of the worst streets in East Cleveland with respect to repair. Has, I believe, ninety-five percent occupancy at this point, so there are twen, there are twenty dwellings within that development. I think they charge now twelve hundred dollars per unit for two bedroom units, with ninety-five percent occupancy, so has a right now of just one vacancy. So that demonstrates that there is a desirability to live in East Cleveland. I would like to question counsel concerning land bank properties. It's my understanding, of course, that a member of council has a property that remains in the land bank that has been passed by the NAC. There are other properties within the land bank that are developable, that are desirable, actually. And those properties not only have not been actively marketed to people who might be interested in accessing those properties. In many cases, nothing has been done, people who have been willing to take hold of those properties, who have resources to rehab those properties and get those properties back on the tax roll. I believe the property that Mr. King was seeking on Oak Hill, the average tax is over three thousand dollars per year for properties in that area. That's a significant amount of revenue. And if other properties that are similarly valued or have the prospect to be of higher value are pushed out of the land bank, not withheld, aggressively marketed to people who have the resources to renovate those properties and who are inclined either to rent those properties or to reside in those properties. That could also generate a significant revenue stream for the city. It would also improve the look of the city, which would improve the morale of the residents concerning the prospects for independence. So I think we have still a great deal of opportunity within the city that has not been developed. There is new development. In fact, I'm looking to move very soon into a property that was a vacant property, a vacant building, that's being renovated right now, close, approximating the library on Holio. I should be in that property within the next couple of weeks. And so, by looking, instead of looking at all of the problems that we have within the city, which are real. Focusing on what are our opportunities that have been missed and are continuing to be missed, and looking at developing multiple nodes for development, and not just waiting for somebody from the outside to push down Euclid Avenue. That we have our theater, we have our library, we have that church next door. These are very useful institutions that can facilitate development. We have our schools. All of these entities can help foster development, and there have been examples of cities who, where these things have been done, and they can be done here. East Cleveland can become an arts and cultural and intellectual hub, and examples of things that were done in Chicago by people like Theaster Gates. And things that were done in Houston around project row houses can be replicated here and can transform the face of our city. So thank you for your resolve, those of you who are still, who are still committed, remaining independent, and for those of you who are not. You know, if, if you have no strategy to move the city forward, perhaps you should reconsider one's position with it. Thank you.
All right, you want to respond to counsel?
Is this our remarks for?
Yes.
For counsel?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I got something to say. First of all, uh, thank you, Devin Branch, for what you shared. If you've been down Euclid Avenue lately, you know there's a big building, uh, I think on, uh, it's the street over from Delma. I can't think of the street. It's right about twenty feet from Sunoco Gas Station.
Alboron.
Yeah, Alboron is the street. But that, they tore that building down there. It's clear. It, it, it at least cost, like, a lot of money to tear that building down. It was a big building. My point is this. Devin Branch alluded to economic development. That area, and I've been saying it, and I'll say it again, land location between Lakeview and Superior is priceless. It's funny that we, we have a difficult time tearing down houses man sell, but we got that building tore down. It almost makes you think there's a bunch of people in collusion for that land. I think it's driving the, the annexation, merger, whichever way you see it, is the land between Lakeview and Superior. That land, there's a lot of vacant land there. If you've been down to University Circle, which is basically less than a thousand feet from East Cleveland. You know, they've, they've done a lot of development down there, but their land lot from the standpoint of no parking, where's the land? We have the land. Now, I think there's reluctance on their part to work with the government in East Cleveland, because the perception out there is that we're dysfunctional much of people, but we're not. I am totally opposed to merging and annexation. I think that the development that's taking place, Brother Wheeler, could took place ten years ago, coming down Euclid. They did Circle East, we broke the ground there and all like that. They're buying up land, and if, I think if you took some time and done your homework, you'll find out the land is being bought up left and right, right in that area. They're hoping that we fall on our face. Now, we have a council person on the council who talks about that we're a divided group. I'll say this. When we go out and press charges against our clerk, that's divisive, because it pisses the council people against. I'll say this, and I need to say this for the record. Tracy Peters, Tracy's Elvetio, Yudria Peters has been a professional ever since she's been here. I can speak to this from being through five or ten clerks over the last seventeen years. She knows her job, she knows her charter, and she does what she needs to do. And I think when it gets to the point that we do a legal thing, no matter who we are, that is divisive. Because ultimately, we're gonna have to make a decision, and we're gonna have to go on it, and that's divisive. I will say this, and I say this publicly. I have no problems with Tracy Peters. She's always been professional. She doesn't share council information with other council like she not supposed to do. She does what your charter says, and when you're talking about recall and all like that, there's a process that has to be followed. All government term is based on process and procedure. So for us to be taking our clerk to court, it's foolishness. It's the essence of foolishness. And I just, I, explain that to me. Explain that to me. I have a problem with it. Yes. Well, uh, there will be an explanation from, yeah, I, I hear you, Brandon. You go, I, I'm here, but I just know that if there's anything disurging her. It's false. It's false. Okay?
Hey, hey, please.
And I need to say that.
Please, sir.
I need to say that.
Please, sir.
No, no, okay? Okay. Okay, and let me close with this. We have some prices land in this city from the location I've just articulated to you, especially from Lakeview up to Superior. And if we just give it away, we're fools. I have spoken. Thank you.
Any other counsel?
I can agree with, uh, my colleague on a number of things, uh, that have transpired over the last several months and weeks. Very disheartening, disappointing that, uh, when we have. Very disheartening, disappointing that we have a disagreement with an employee of ours. We should also bring that into either executive committee and go into executive session. Especially if it transpired while that individual was conducting. Uh, be quiet while I'm talking. While, sorry, while one is, uh, thank you, sir, cause I did not talk, I didn't talk. Excuse me. So, so in, in our reality, the respect of doing business within, you know, the frame of government that we still have here is at all time, you know, low, and it, and it's definitely on shaky ground. I mean, when we can't resolve our situations amongst each other.
Please, yes.
The council clerks and/or any employees that we have within the council office report to all five, not just Council Thomas or the next thing in line, they report to all five. And I believe that the discrepancy that happened that day could have been handled in a different light. I made my thoughts known verbally, I asked to speak to every council person. I only got a call from one, and the other call that I got from Council, Council Martin, it was an opportunity where I couldn't talk, but I knew what he was gonna say. I just would hope that going forward, this government structure that we still have understands what's right and what's wrong, and what to do in, in, in a time of disagreement and/or agreement. Because in, in reality, I'm gonna tell you guys this one time only. We kind of brought this on ourselves. Where East Cleveland is, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not putting on the blame of any politician holding office now or in the past as, as a citizenry, we brought, the way East Cleveland is, we brought this on ourselves. And so, in order to fix it, we had, we have to be our own saving grace. I won't say that people have not contributed to the cause, but as it relates to accountability, we have not been most accountable to one another. So, I'm not gonna, again, point the blame, but we have not been accountable. We choose to say, speak against things that we wanna speak against, and we choose to remain silent when it, when it's time to actually speak up. And that's disappointing as a community of color, an urban community, a diverse community in so many respects. We, we're just not, we have not done our job. And we're paying for it by lack of income, lack of resources, and inability to work uniformly amongst each other. In a perfect world, I would have hoped that East Cleveland would have rebounded under current administrations, most recent administrations, whatever you wanna say. Current council, most recent council, but that has not been the case. We have failed each other in trying to remain independent and create an economic powerhouse and/or development amongst our own selves, and not relying on outside partners to come and develop within our own community. And the sad thing is, it speaks to your resume. And I'm, I'm being general, our resume. So, when one asks down the road, what did you do? You will be judged on the place you stood and the time when somebody called on you to lead a community.
Thank you, sir. You mean thinking about Mayor?
Motion to adjourn.
Anybody's free to go if they want to go. I won't hold you here. Just a couple of substantive things, there was talk about traffic lights at Hayden and Northview. There was a utility company that was doing some utility work there. They inadvertently disrupted our utility lines, so we're working on having that company repair that. So, so we'll get that done as quickly as possible. Although, we don't like it when private companies do things to break our infrastructure. Certainly easier to go after them and fix it than it is to try and go into our own bank account accounts ourselves because of the lack of funds. To the other pictures and statements that were made here tonight, I'll just say something general. The things that are often brought before this body into the mayor's office are symptoms. Very few things deal with the root problem. And it's, it's tough to say that when you're a person who is troubled by the symptoms, the potholes in the street, the vacant abandoned houses, the building that gets vandalized, the various and sundry things that you can see with the infrastructure. It's difficult to say that that's just a symptom, that's not the real problem. The real problem that leads to all of these symptoms is that over the last fifty years, the economy has changed, and the city has not changed for it. And it's gotten so far behind that the foundation that cities are built on financially has eroded. We would all see the same picture if we looked at the past fifty years of East Cleveland. We lost sixty percent of the population, sixty percent. When your revenue is in large part driven by the number of people that live in your city, losing sixty percent of your people means if all things are constant, you lost sixty percent of your revenue. But not only did we lose sixty percent of our population, the makeup of the remaining forty percent has changed. Household income, average household income in nineteen seventy, in today's dollars was about fifty thousand dollars. Today, average household income in today's dollars is twenty thousand dollars. Not only did the population itself drop by sixty percent, the average income dropped by sixty percent. If you take those two things together, all things being equal, you've got relatively speaking, probably five times less money now than we had forty or fifty years ago. When you look at it that way, it's very, very expensive to maintain and repair and replace an infrastructure. We got a supplement about Garfield, that's a good thing, you resurface Garfield. Somebody said something about Lakeview, we are resurfacing Lakeview. You know, there were a couple of things that go on like that. But when it comes to the other things...